I'm going to call the July meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. And if you'll rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a reminder, if you have a cellphone, if you'd please turn that off or put it in airplane mode. And Kelly, could we have a roll call, please?
Kimball?
Present.
Carey?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Ostemeyer?
Here.
Latham?
Here.
Borders?
Here.
Let the record show that all Commissioners are present with the exception of Nancy Hampi, who is excused.
Okay, thank you. Russ, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments tonight, thank you.
Okay. Any appointments? Nothing that I can see. So just a reminder, we do have three public hearings this evening. If you plan to testify at any one of those hearings, we need you to sign up on the podium in the back, fill out one of the forms, get it up to Kelly in the front here, prior to the hearing. Declaration of conflict. Do we have any conflicts this evening?
I do.
Okay.
I have a conflict on the second item on the agenda, the Viking Estates subdivision. I'll be recusing myself.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a conflict on the third item for this evening. That's the Meadowvis Estates zone change.
Okay, thank you. All right, the consent calendar.
Move to approve as presented?
I second it.
Motion in the second. Could we have a roll call, Kelly?
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ostemeyer?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, citizens' issues. Do we have anyone that wishes to address the commission this evening on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, move on. Unfinished old business, I see none there. So we're at our public hearing, and I see we have a couple people signing up, so we'll have, take a couple of minutes here to let them sign up. Okay. At this time, we'll address the Smalley annexation. So I'm going to open the public hearing, and John, if you'll introduce the project,
John Manley, Associate Planner here with the City Post Falls, introducing the Smalley Annexation Case File A-15-01. The applicant is Steve Smalley, and is being requested to review the annexation and determine that the requested zoning conforms to the Post Falls Comprehensive Plan and to make a recommendation of approval to City Council along with appropriate conditions. General location of this project is on the southeast corner, or, I'm sorry, southwest of the intersection of Hope and Cecil Road. More specifically, you can see highlighted here, and you can see in the current conditions, you have larger five to 10 acre tracts to the west that are in the county with a developing subdivision, which is a PUD to Tullamore project just to the east. Looking at the surrounding zoning, you can see in green here, this is agricultural zone property in the county. In the city, you can see the R1 underlying zone with some CCS, which is Community Commercial Services, to the south, southeast, and to the east, and also further to the west, some more single-family homes. So the project is approximately 10 acres. The current land use is residential agriculture. The water provider for this project would be the Ross Point Water District, and the sewer would be provided by the City Post Falls. So that would be the introduction of the project.
Okay, thank you. Could we have the applicant present, please?
Good evening. My name's John Burtonus. I'm with Coldwell Banker. I represent Steve Smalley. I'm the real estate agent who has kind of been overseeing this entire project with the people at City Hall through the application process and with Tate Engineering and through the processes for what we have here tonight. Oops, forgot this clicker. Okay, Mr. Manley has already pointed out the current zoning to the east being residential with Tullamore, and they're also moving to the north of Hope with a new subdivision there. Everything to the north, directly to the northeast and south of Mr. Smalley's property is agricultural. And here's an exploded view. We're at the intersections of specifically Cecil and Bluegrass, which intersects with Hope. I don't know if they're going to eventually change that into One Street or what, but there's a water main that comes all the way from the intersections of Bluegrass and Hope to the west across the front of Mr. Smalley's property. It's a 12-inch water main all the way across the front, and it ends appro, or it goes all the way down the property, right?
It goes clear through.
Yeah, it goes clear through. Then Cecil is now completely, oh, you can't see me pointing at this, can you?
No.
Cecil now is completely paved all the way through to the intersections of Bluegrass and Hope, and there's sewer collectors at the intersection, at the immediate intersection of Cecil and Hope. And I'll get to that here in a moment. This is for the major collectors, which I'll also get to in the outline from the engineers. Here's the legal description that was requested along with the application to be guaranteed by a title company, and I can read through that whole thing if you'd like, but I might fall asleep.
That's okay.
It is Track 37 of Block 25, the Post Falls Irrigated Tracks. And it's comprising of 9.453 acres, so it's just under 10 acres. Here's the narrative prepared by Tate Engineering for this project. He's requesting annexation into the city limits for, of 9.45 acres. The parcel number commencing, let's see, comprehensive plan, population goal of the statement, to plan for moderate and stable growth that is consistent with community vision and the city's fiscal line service capabilities. The city will endeavor to maintain and enhance a level of services provided to Post Falls citizens. The site of the, of this project is, is the pocket still within the Cootney County boundaries that protrudes into City of Post Falls, south of Prairie, and west of Greens Ferry and east of Cecil. So his property does abut Cecil, which is the city line. Housing goal, Post Falls should continue to ensure that adequate land is available for future development, and this site would provide area for housing development. Zoning is requesting, we are requesting zoning of R1. Land use, this area is adjacent to residential development R1 on the east, west, and south. Property to the north is Cootney County. Future land use of the City of Post Falls shows that this is Area G2, Highway 41 corridor. There is some commercial to the south and the east of the property along the Poline Road and Highway 41. Sewer, Rob Tate, the engineer who prepared this narrative, spoke with Rob Palace and discussed the sewer drainage or flow on the property, and it was indicated that the existing sewer at the northeast corner of the property has depth and capacity to, to serve this property. Water, Dan Selden of the Ross Point Water District stated that the district has 12-inch mains along the north, north and west sides of the parcel and would be able to provide water. Stormwater, stormwater will be retained and treated onsite and in conformance with the City of Post Falls with the stormwater management ordinances. Since the property is fairly level and over gravelly soils, it is anticipated that the stormwater management will not be problematic. Roads, the Post Falls Master Transportation Plan shows that the planned road on the north and existing road on the east side of the parcel are designated with the status of a major collector. This will provide for any anticipated traffic impact and development may generate. Future interior roads would be designed and conform, in conformance with the City of Post Falls standards. The transportation plan also shows sidewalks and multi-use trails being developed in the north and east frontage of this property parcel. Fire protection, this property is located in the Cootney County Fire Protection District and is approximately one and a half miles from the station on 16th Avenue, providing for reasonable response time. This site is, for police protection, this site is approximately two miles from the City of Post Falls Police Building on East Polston Avenue. Parks and Recreation, multi-use pedestrian and bicycle paths are slated to adjoin the site to the north and to the east. These will allow for connections to facilities along the Spokane River, which is approximately three miles south, and existing parks to the west. Schools, the Post Falls High School and the Prairie View Elementary School are located within one mile of this site. The small area being considered for this annexation should not have a significant impact on these facilities. In conclusion, the annexation of this parcel with an R1 zoning seems to be a logical decision for the City of Post Falls. Majority of the infrastructure needed to serve this parcel already exists, and its annexation would assist in removing pockets of Cootney County that extend into the city. We feel that annexation of this parcel is in the best interest of the city.
with the policies found within the comprehensive plan, and that would be the annexation policies
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicants before they leave?
and general policies found within that comp plan.
Okay.
It's within the City of Post Falls area of city impact.
None.
None, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, John, the staff report, please.
It's also contiguous within the city limits, or to the city limits, as stated by the applicant. The R1 zoning designation is consistent to the areas surrounding it that are in the City of Post Falls. Per Title 18A dot zero four dot zero four zero administrative, administration and structure, in a nutshell, this here has City Council determine whether or not the proposed project shall either be done with, or annexed in with, is conventional zoning and/or smart code. So depending on the recommendation tonight, it gives you guys the opportunity, if you desire to recommend smart code, then you could recommend that to council rather than recommend approval with a conventional zoning. To note, though, that may complicate things if it was smart code and add more noticing in another public hearing because it was noticed as an annexation for R1 zoning rather than smart code. Engineering Division commented in regards to transportation that it would not adversely impact the city system. And for Cecil Road and Hope Avenue, or Bluegrass currently, which is in the county, that at the time of annexation, dedication and right-of-way and easements for the major collector roadways would be required along those properties' frontages. That dedication would include the right-of-way for 42.5 feet and an adjoining 10-foot sidewalk drainage and utility easement. So what that is, is you have a right-of-way of 85 feet, and so they would be required for half of that, and then in addition, an additional easement that would go on to the private property for the 10-foot sidewalk drainage and utility easement. In regards to the water reclamation, is that it's served by a regional lift station, the 12th Avenue Regional Lift Station, and there's, there's two different ways of how this lift station can be paid for. One's through an LID, and there's currently an LID out there for those who chose to participate for that lift station. Also, there's other individuals that to participate in annexations would then get a surcharge, and that would be at $3,585.55 per service unit, and it would be adjusted annually for the ENR dot records, the CC, and I actually, I don't know what the CCI acronym stands for. But this particular annexation did not participate in LID, so it would include the surcharge process or element. For domestic water, that would be provided by the Ross Point Water District, as already mentioned. The Police Department has went out and looked at this property, and they have no concerns with the requested annexation. Cootney County Fire Department also has no issues with the proposed annexation. So this time, I'd stand for any questions you may have for staff that was presented tonight or was in the staff report.
Questions for staff?
I just had a question. The access to it when it's done would only, would just be off of Cecil? Will they be required to do anything to Bluegrass?
To Bluegrass?
Any improvements?
Yeah, as part of improvements, as this develops within the appropriate phase, obviously, if it went and got improved with one phase of the whole thing, you would get improvements on what is now known as Bluegrass and Cecil Road. Potentially, if it was a multi-phase, then those negotiations then would occur at the time of the subdivision plan and, and through that process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Fred?
None.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Testimony, Kelly. Anybody want to speak in favor of?
We do not.
How about neutral?
We do not.
Post?
We do not.
Okay, we have no testimony. So we don't need any rebuttal. Questions for the staff? Can't ask any after we close the hearing, so any other questions? Okay. Close the public hearing for the Smalley annexation, and I'll open it up for discussion. Start with you, Fred.
Seems to meet all the requirements, so I would be in favor of.
Okay, Mark?
I agree. With the, with the utility lines and the water lines running under Bluegrass, it ties that whole part of Post Falls together, the main, and it's, it's a, it's almost an island in the county, so it makes a lot of, it makes good sense.
Okay. Okay, I'm with you.
Oh, I think it makes sense also. It doesn't seem to be any objection to the surrounding neighbors either, so.
Okay, Ray?
Yeah, I think it's a logical extension of city boundaries and also an appropriate zoning.
Ryan?
I like these. It's logical, makes sense, R1. I think it's great.
Okay, and I like it as well, so all of the essential infrastructures seems to be taken care of, so with that, I'll look for a motion.
It would be, make sure I got the case number here correct.
Yep.
Matter of case file A-15-01, Smalley Annexation, I move to recommend approval for annexation with an R1 zoning, finding that is, that the application in, and is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and also recommend adoption of engineering departments and water reclamation departments requirements.
Second, do we need any clarification on the conventional zoning versus smart code? No motion?
No. I think that was already addressed with the R1 as part of the motion.
Okay, I'm good with that. All right, with that, Kelly, could we have a roll call?
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Ostemeyer?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on, and I'm going to open the public hearing for the Viking Estates Subdivision S-15-01. John?
Yes, so for the Viking Estates subdivision, the applicant is Viking Construction, and the applicant is present this evening. The requested action is to review and recommend approval to City Council to subdivide approximately 38 acres of R1 single-family residential zone property into 87 residential lots averaging 13,504 square feet in size. The approximate location you see here with the asterisk is south of the Post Falls High School, kind of sandwiched between Horse Haven Avenue and 16th. You can see more specifically here, highlighted in red, how it's oriented with the school Here you can see some of the surrounding zoning to the area. You can see that on all four sides, it's surrounded by R1, single-family homes, or zoning designation for that matter. Also, in the lighter green, you see Cootney County Zoned Ag Suburban. The comprehensive plan designation for this is residential infill. The current land use is residential ag, and the surrounding land uses are schools, churches, and other residential properties. The water provider would be the Ross Point Water District, sewer being provided by the City Post Falls. This would conclude staff's introduction of the project.
Okay, thank you. Could we have the applicant, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Todd Whipple. I'm with Whipple Consulting Engineers. I'm here to discuss the Viking Estates subdivision. Sorry, I'm getting ready. The address for the, for Whipple Consulting Engineers is 2528 North Sullivan Road, Spokane Valley, Washington, 99216. As a, you have to excuse me if I get a little mixed up because obviously, we're in Washington. We do a lot of work in Idaho, and the gentleman who usually does this has to recuse himself this evening, so I'm used to staff making a full presentation, and then we come up here and pick and choose through the staff report what we like, and pick the pictures that we want, and go from there. So I think that, I'll just kind of muddle through it a little bit. I'm going to hear about it tomorrow, so we'll just go from there. The Viking Estates is a proposed subdivision within the R1 zone, allowing lots as small as 6,500 square feet. The proposal in front of you, though, is an estate-sized, lotted subdivision with lots averaging 13,700 square feet for a zoning of 2.31 units per acre. By comparison, had this property been brought forward to you with the allowed minimum zoning, you could have seen a plot with up to 160 residential lots. In this instance, they're proposing 87. So that's the advantage of having a, what we call by today's standard, an estate-sized lot, 13,700, which maybe when I first started doing this, they were quarter acre, but now they're, I mean, half acre, now they're basically quarter acre. We find, and I think that's presented in the staff report, and is also presented in the applicant's narrative, that the project that's been presented before you tonight does meet the standards and goals of the comp plan, and so when we finally get down to the staff report, you'll find that hopefully you'll be able to accept this project and recommend approval to City Council. As proposed, the 87 lots will be developed in three phases. The proposed project in and of itself includes six tracts. Those tracts are primarily for stormwater and open space, but when you get to the staff report and you look at the exhibits, you'll see that Track 6 is a pedestrian corridor that will allow for through pedestrian travel between 16th and Horse Haven. So the, and that pedestrian corridor is planned to be 30 feet wide with a 10-foot path and plantings. The plantings are mostly going to be grass with a few trees. The increase to width was provided to allow for ambient light from the streetlights on both ends to filter down through the links so that it will be a safe and inviting corridor for people to traverse throughout all times of the day. And since we're a northern state, northern city, we have darker mornings and darker evenings once we get to that time of the year. Right now, that's not an issue, so the width along with the street lighting should provide an inviting atmosphere for pedestrians. This proposal, the other five tracts, one through five, are essentially for stormwater and open space. This project lies over what we consider the valley gravels, which are, I would say as an engineer, they're very inviting media for stormwater disposal, and so it allows the preparation of grass infiltration areas to be discharged directly in their lying soils. There are, as a part of Tracts 4 and 5, which will lie along the improvements to 16th Avenue, those tracts include a 30-foot buffer, so not only are they for stormwater use, they'll also provide separation from the back of the lots that will back onto 16th and, between 16th and the back of the lots, that would be the 30-foot buffer. This proposal is, if you looked through the staff report, you'll find it includes a 1.33 acre park. The park is planned to be a passive park. The biggest amenity about the proposed park is that the park will occupy essentially the home site, so if you were to drive by the site, you'd see that the home site includes some mature trees, some of those rolled elm trees, and there's other trees out there. The intent is to keep the large, healthy trees, which way, that way the park will get kind of a head start. In one of these new subdivisions, so often we show up and we plant two- and three-inch diameter caliper trees, hoping that in our lifetime, they become a full and mature tree, but in this instance, we're very fortunate with the way that the plot was laid out and designed so that the proposed park will actually have those mature trees. I think I identified in the staff report and as required by the city, 16th Avenue will be improved to major collector standards, including curb gutter swales and a pathway. There was a minor correction that staff noted that we didn't have enough eastman areas, so we will have to increase that from 10 feet to 15 feet. Horse Haven will be constructed as a half-road section, and we will continue to work with the city and the adjacent developers so that at construction through the phasing, as we phase our project, it will provide a through east-west corridor between Greens Ferry and Cecil, which is a kind of an important corridor in this area. It'll provide, that way the project will have full they'll also provide separation from the back of the lots that will back onto 16th and, between 16th and the back of the lots. That would be the 30-foot buffer. This proposal is, if you looked through the staff report, you'll find it includes a 1.33 acre park. The park is planned to be a passive park. The biggest amenity about the proposed park is that the park will occupy essentially the home site. So if you were to drive by the site, you'd see that the home site includes some mature trees, some of those rolled elm trees, and there's other trees out there. The intent is to keep the large, healthy trees, which way the, that way the park will get kind of a head start. In one of these new subdivisions, so often we show up and we plant two- and three-inch diameter caliper trees, hoping that in our lifetime, they become a full and mature tree. But in this instance, we're very fortunate with the way that the plot was laid out and designed, so that the proposed park will actually have those mature trees. I think I identified in the staff report, and as required by the city, 16th Avenue will be improved to major collector standards, including curb gutter swales and a pathway. There was a minor correction that staff noted that we didn't have enough eastman areas, so we will have to increase that from 10 feet to 15 feet. Horse Haven will be constructed as a half-road section, and we will continue to work with the city and the adjacent developers, so that at construction through the phasing, as we phase our project, it will provide a through-east-west corridor between Greens Ferry and Cecil, which is a kind of an important corridor in this area. It'll provide, that way the project will have full access when completely constructed on Horse Haven and on 16th, and the occupants of the plot will be able to move fairly freely east and west. And I think, once the Greens Ferry Bridge comes in, I think you'll see that some of the localized patterns in the city will change. I'm sure that when you went through the process to develop the Greens Ferry Bridge, that you, I'm sure KCAD and the city worked real hard to figure out which way those people were going to go, but I will tell you that it'll be an important element for this subdivision. The interior roads will be developed at the Post Falls local street standards, and all streets will be constructed at Post Falls standards. As noted in the staff introduction, the water system will be a looped water system in conformance with the Ross Point Water District standards, and the sewer will be installed to the city of Post Falls wastewater standards, or water reclamation standards. Each lot will be hooked up to dry utilities, obviously, power, gas, electrical, telephone, cable. Stormwater in the tracks will be collected from the public roads and treated and discharged via grass infiltration areas to their land soils per the city of Post Falls standards. As a part of the final plot, a homeowners association will be established to maintain the tracks and fronting swales and the park. We've read the staff report and conditions, and have no questions or changes at this time. We ask that after the staff presentation, your deliberation, that you approve Viking Estates as conditioned. We ask for your approval in advance to City Council, and I'll answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Questions for the applicant? None. Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the staff report.
So the planning division reviewed the proposed subdivision, and as mentioned, the proposed lots meter exceed the minimum lot size per the R1 zoning designation. It's intended to be developed in three phases, but like it says, this is an intent. Subdivisions can modify their phasing plan as they seem accordingly. There's going to be the proposed 1.33 acre park that's being proposed. That's unique. Actually, most subdivisions don't offer parks space, really. It's usually something that comes through a PUD. That's how we've been getting a lot of the parks in Post Falls. So it's kind of unique, and kind of a positive aspect of this proposed subdivision is that park size and its location. In exhibit A3, you can see in the staff report that there's a series of roads that are classified as a loop that are being proposed. You've got an exhibit here, and so there'll be a, staff's requesting a minor change there is, you have a loop here, in a loop, you can leave the street and then exit the street. So that meets the definition of a loop. Same with, this street is a loop on a loop, which is a little odd, but it works. But Ivory Loop, which is being proposed, is going to have to change its designation, which we'll discuss with the applicant and get the right street classification for that prior to plat. As a clarification, in the staff report, residential policy number nine, there was, there's a policy that says examine pedestrian and bicycle facilities relative to smart code and a desire to create linked livable neighborhoods. For some reason, there was, the text just ended. So in order to expand on that, that this proposed subdivision is going to do road improvements for Horse Haven along its north edge, as well as the south end, which will create the pedestrian connections east-west for its proportionate share. Internally, you'll have internal residential streets, and it'll behave very similar to other residential streets we have, where you have sidewalks and shared roadways between autos and pedestrian traffic if they want to be out on the road. There is this pedestrian connection here, though, at this location, that would connect the proposed Ivory Loop to the north, which is eventually the school property north of Horse Haven. So there's a little bit more elaborate response than what was in the staff report. The engineering division, in regards to transportation, 16th Avenue being a major collector, that the proposed cross-section is in conformance with the city standards, except there is a following required revision with it. It was mentioned as part of Todd Whipple's intro to it, or to the project, and I got a cross-section here, is that the typical, we have a 10-foot, but because of a multi-use path, it's going to be required to increase to 15 feet. Horse Haven is a minor collector. The proposed cross-section is a deviation from the adopted city standards, but engineering staff has reviewed this and has, sees this as being acceptable. It still has two lanes, two traffic lanes, as well as two bike lanes. And then on this side here, you see there's a city side, a multi-use path, and then there's a utility easement on this side, which would include a sidewalk. Driveway ingress and egress for residential properties directly adjacent to both 16th and Horse Haven, they're going to be prohibited on the plat. So all the residences will be encouraged to go into the internal driveways and exit onto those collector roadways. A homeowners association shall be created to provide for the irrigation and maintenance of the right-of-way frontage along Horse Haven and 16th Avenue. In regards to water reclamation, facilities are available adjacent to the property, and there is sufficient capacity for the proposed development. And as stated, the domestic water would be coordinated with Ross Point Water District. For other city departments, the Parks and Rec Department has commented on this proposal, and states that it is within walking distance of two schools to the north, and within walking distance of a mile to the Singing Hills Park. And they stress the need for paths and trails to connect parks and usable open space within the subdivision, of which I believe is presented within their project. Post Falls Police Department, they have no concerns regarding the proposed project, or, or post, project. And for Cootney County Fire and Rescue, they're in support of the subdivision proposal and reserves the right to review the subdivision plan for fire code compliance. So that would conclude staff's report on the project. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for John?
No.
I have one.
Go ahead.
What's the normal process of establishing an association for development, for new development?
Well, prior to plat, within that process, it's, they're required to establish a homeowners association and verify that it's been established, and they present that to the engineering division. So before it actually ever plats, they're going to verify that it's been created.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions for John at this time? Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
This time, we'll take testimony. Kelly, those signed up to speak in favor?
We have none.
How about neutral?
None.
And opposed?
We have none.
Okay, thank you. No need for any rebuttal at this point. So any other questions for staff before we close the hearing? All right, the public hearing will be closed. I'll open it up for discussion. Vicki?
I have no problems with it. I think it's a natural extension of what's going on there.
Brian?
No, I, I agree. I like all the pieces of it.
No, it's great. I appreciate the design layout. No dead ends, nice flow, two ways to come in and out, so that's good. They're bigger sized lots, and if the city's okay with, you know, the utilities and all of that, I think I have absolutely no problem with it. Works great.
Brad?
I don't see any challenges with the development.
Thank you. And I also like the development. I like the layout of it. I like the location, the size of the lots. But I would like to see under the conditions, under number seven, added, just for clarification purposes, to include the park as the last four or five words to the end of that sentence, just to make sure that we have it clear that the homeowners association will be responsible for the maintenance of the park. Okay, with that, hearing no other discussion, I'd look for a motion.
I would move to approve S-15-01 Viking subdivision with conditions one through six as presented, condition seven to include the word "the park" for clarification, and also approving conditions eight and nine as presented, and ask that the project's moved to City Council for final review and approval.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Kelly, could we have a roll call, please?
Carey?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Latham?
Uh, yes.
Ostemeyer?
Yes.
Horders?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our last public hearing. We're going to open the public hearing for the Meadow Vista Estates Zone Change, ZC-15-01. John?
So the Meadow Vista Estates Zone Change is being presented, and the applicant is Chapel Metals LLC. The Planning and Zoning Commission is being asked to review the proposed zone change from an R1S zoning designation to an R1 zoning designation, and make a recommendation of approval to City Council. The R1S zoning designation is more of a ag, urban ag-type zoning designation that has one unit per acre, and the proposed zone change would be up to five units per acre. So that's the difference of the two zoning designations. Project location, as you see here, is on the southeast corner of Howell and Prairie. More specifically, it's highlighted here in blue. You can see to the, just to the south, southeast of there, you have some approximate half-acre lots, and then it transitions to one-acre lots to the south. To the east, you have, which is a smart code project, some traditional, single-family home type lots, and then some other single-family homes to the east, with obviously a majority surrounded by Cootney County properties with some county, other county islands in the area. For surrounding zoning, this is where you see the smart code to the east. You can see the county ag properties zoned to the north, some rural county zone properties just adjacent to the east, some spotty pearls to the northwest, with the R1S properties zoned south and adjacent to the proposal. The project size is approximately 8.36 acres. The comp plan designation is residential infill. Surrounding land use and zoning was just presented. Current land use, rural residential. The water for this area to be provided by East Green Acres, and the sewer provided by City Post Falls. This would conclude staff's introduction of the project.
Okay, thank you. Could we have the applicant come? State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Scott Porman. I'm at 8884 North Government Way in Hayden, attorney for Chapel Meadow LLC. You, this may look familiar to you. We were before you back in May with a neighborhood plan under your smart code, seeking some SC3 and SC4 zoning for a proposed subdivision and development. And we paid close attention to your comments and your recommendations in rejecting that application. And so we're back before you tonight with an amendment seeking a zone change from R1S to the R1 zone. Your reasons for rejecting the prior application for this property back in May included that you felt the density was too high, specifically using that SC4 and SC3 with the residential and commercial mixed together. Some of you felt that commercial was not necessarily appropriate for that particular area, at least not at this time, that that request was inconsistent with the comp plan, and your denial of that request was unanimous. Our current request does not have any associated subdivision. It is lower in density than the previous request, and it is, we feel consistent with adjacent development within the city limits, in particular, the subdivision that's to the south and east of the property that John mentioned has, I think, actually, one-third acre lots in that subdivision. And we believe it's consistent with the comp plan and with your future land use map, and I'll get into those in more detail. But first, the legal standards that you are required to apply for a zone change request. Specifically, under your code, amendments to your zoning map have to be in accordance with your future land use map, and they have to be consistent with the goals and policies of your comprehensive plan. Idaho Code also weighs in on zone change applications, and you are supposed to give particular consideration to effects of a proposed zone change on public service providers, political subdivisions that provide public services, including school districts. Section 676511C of Idaho Code also requires that you analyze whether the zone change, to ensure it's not in conflict with the comp plan. A little different standard than in accordance with, this is not in conflict with. I guess, two sides of the same coin. So summarize those legal standards. It has to be in accordance with your future land use map and your goals and policies with the comp plan. You're supposed to give particular consideration to the effect of a zone change on public service providers, and then you have to ensure that it's not in conflict with your comp plan. So first, your future land use map, as John mentioned, designates this property for residential development. Neighborhood or residential infill is the category it's given. There are existing growth that's moving this direction, and with future improvements that are coming to Prairie and Howell, which we showed on the corner of those two, those two roads. The future development and future residential development of this area, I think, is easy to anticipate. As Prairie is upgraded from the current two lanes to the five lane with the center turn lane that we see east of Highway 41, you can anticipate that higher-density residential growth for this property would be appropriate. How about comp plan compatibility? Your staff, in its report, has analyzed your comp plan and found that the change in zoning to R1 would be consistent and compatible with your comp plan. The applicant has also submitted a detailed comprehensive plan analysis that essentially comes to the same conclusion for those goals and policies that are relevant. And I think the comp plan, again, recognizes that this is an area designated for residential growth and development, and our request is consistent with what you're seeing in that Craftsman at Meadow Ridge development to the south and east with one-third acre parcels. The third legal standard you're required to consider, again, is the impact of the zone change on public services. And this is information straight out of the staff report. Your engineering division said there would be no negative impact on the city's transportation system, existing or projected future improvements to Prairie and Howell. Water reclamation has existing facilities that have the capability and the capacity to serve a future subdivision on the property under the R1 zoning. Your domestic water would be provided by East Green Acres irrigation, and they have agreed to serve. They have no objection. Cootney Fire and Rescue has no objection to the zone change. Post Falls Police has no concerns, and the school district had no objection to the zone change. So of the agencies that all, that weighed in on this zone change request, none of them expressed any concern or objection to changing the zoning to R1. Given the location of the property on Prairie and Howell, and the anticipated Given the location of the property on Prairie and Howell, and the anticipated future improvements to those roadways, given the, your future land use map designation as residential development, and the compatibility of R1 with the comp plan, and then the lack of any impact on public service providers, and taking into consideration your comments and recommendations from the last application, we would request that you would recommend approval of this R1 zoning, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for the applicant at this time?
I have a, I have a head.
You cited some Idaho statutes that we as Commissioners must follow. Are you aware of any Idaho statutes that protect the rural zoning of an, of an area of a city?
Idaho statutes don't make preferences for any particular type of zoning over another. They just require you to take into consideration in evaluating a zone change request of what the impacts will be, and compatibility with your comprehensive.
So it goes both ways?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant? John will ask for the staff report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. So when staff looked at this, obviously, the balance between looking at the existing environment, the proposed, the existing transportation corridor, and what potential future impacts of that transportation corridor, and some of the developments along Prairie Avenue and in the adjoining area come into play as we review this. It's, I don't know if a straightforward answer on this. But in that road classification, Prairie Avenue is a minor arterial, as you see here in green. And there's where the proposed zone change area is in proximity to these minor arterials and other major roadways within Post Falls, and this does happen to be adjacent versus some of that R1S property is a little further removed and is not adjacent. But obviously, along McGuire, you do have R1S property adjacent in that. So, once again, this isn't a real straightforward answer on this matter. So in looking at this, and the impacts, and how it relates to the transportation corridor, we looked at 18.16.010, the establishment of a zoning district of the Post Falls Municipal Code section, and an expert excerpt from it is that zoning is assigned following considerations of such items as street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic or natural features. Now, there is no specific community plan for this area, and I don't know if geographic and natural features come to play in the decision, but street classifications, traffic patterns, and future land uses do, but just as much as existing development. So, once again, there's really no clear-cut answer in this. The proposed zone change is consistent and meets the policies within the comprehensive plan on zone change, zone change from an R1S to an R1. It's a little bit of a mix-up at that location. Per Title 18.20100, amendments of zoning map and post, of the Post Falls Municipal Code section says that amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the future land use map and the goals and policies found in the Post Falls Comprehensive Plan. So the proposed zone change is consistent, but the existing zone is consistent as well, too. As stated in the applicant's, we have these. It says "not in conflict with the comprehensive plan," "not in conflict with the delivery services by any political subdivision," and "not in conflict with the delivery of services by the school district," all of which is true. Either zoning proposal, they're all true. The engineering division states that the transportation elements of the project are acceptable as presented. The water reclamation currently has the capability and capacity to serve the project, and East Green Acres would be, East Green Acres Irrigation District would provide water to this subdivision. The police department has no concerns with the proposed zone change. Cootney County Fire and Rescue, they have no issues with the proposed zone change. Post Falls School District did reply, said the impact could be 30-plus students divided between grade levels, which would have a limited impact. They intend on completing in addition to the River City Middle School and opening a new elementary school fall of 2016. They have, there's really no impact due to some of these improvements that is going to be coming into their, into the school system. So at this time, I'd stand for any questions you have for me on the proposal, or what's within the staff report.
Questions for John?
Yeah. A question I have is, is it, if this was approved as an R1, they could possibly put minimum, or max, 65-foot, 100 square foot lots, right?
Yeah, the maximum square foot, I mean, the minimum.
Minimum.
The minimum is 6,500 square foot. But currently, there's a five units per acre, so they couldn't, technically, you can get 6.7 units, if you did the math, for five units per acre. But you couldn't attain that because there's a cap of five units per acre. So your lots would have to be larger than 6,500, more than likely. They could attain that after you give right-of-way and whatnot. They may be right around there.
Well, their gentleman alluded to, like, the third-acre parcels that are adjoining and stuff. If this was approved, and they later came in with a subdivision request that had all 6,500, you know, square foot lots, as a council at that time, could we question that? I mean, could we say, no, we don't go along with that? Are we stuck if we make it R1 at this time?
If it's R1, that's 6,500 square feet. After right-of-way dedication, if they could yield 6,500 square foot lots, that would be their vested rights, such that they don't go beyond the five units per acre.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for John?
Was gonna add one clarification. A lot of those lots are around one-third of an acre. The, how it got the R1S as part of that PUD is, there was open space that was granted, so from a, those lots don't net one acre. They, through dedication of open space, it was one acre gross. So you took the number of lots by the gross acres as part of that. That's kinda how it got approved for those smaller lots.
John, I'll clarify that. That was, the PUD also was limited to two units per acre on that particular subdivision, Meadow Ridge.
That's why you saw, saw me speak of the half-acre.
That's right.
Yeah, you spoke of the half-acre, but some of them did actually yield.
Density was two units per acre. The lot sizes ended up at one-third acre because of the right-of-way and open space dedication.
Right. So they are in close proximity, though, of lots that could be. So you're looking at a step down or transition. If you saw on the staff report that transitioning, a lot of times when you get uses next to a, like, a major arterial, it would transition from higher intense, higher densities to a little more, you know, less dense, and to get more rural. So this is almost an inverse effect being proposed, where you're having R1S, and as you're moving towards further away from the core of the city, you're getting higher densities going out to a major arterial. But, once again, that would be, to be expected with that road classification. Similar occurrences have occurred in other major cities, where you have major roads farther away from there. Urban areas start developing densities away from there.
Any questions for John at this point? Okay, hearing none. We'll take testimony. Kelly, those in favor?
None.
None to speak? Okay, how about neutral?
We have none.
Okay, opposed?
We have one.
Okay. Dave Stockwell, would you please come up and present, please?
Good evening.
Good evening. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Dave Stockwell. I live at 13392 West Prairie Avenue in Post Falls, and I live adjacent, just directly east of this division. And as was just stated, we were just here in May talking all about this. So, in any case, I, my views on this haven't changed, but I do have a couple of questions. I'm just wondering if anybody has a map of that subdivision, what they propose right now. I haven't seen that yet. Do you have? I've seen two already, but I haven't seen one of this one.
It's just a, sorry. I can address that. This is just a zone change, and there's no subdivision attached to it.
So they have put it together so you don't know how many houses they're proposing?
We don't know how many, and it can't factor into our decision either.
I see. So I guess the best thing that I can say from my argument last time, of course, is what has been already approved in the RS1, which, excuse me for not having every, all the knowledge that you guys do, but RS1 is what, one house per acre? Is that what RS1 is? And I missed the part right there when you were talking, because I was gonna ask the question. So where do they get to one-third of an acre directly behind me, if it was supposed to be RS1, one per acre? What, how did that get changed?
I can answer that. That was my subdivision a long time ago. I'll land long, land far, far away, it seems. It was annexed as R1S, which is one-acre lots, and then subsequently, when they, when the applicant came back for subdivision, they asked for a PUD where they dedicated 10% of their open space. In exchange for dedicating that open space, they were granted a density of two units per acre, which ended up being one-third acre lots after you subtract out the right-of-way in the open space area.
So now the R, the R1, then, you can put five per acre, is that correct, in that? Am I correct in that?
That is correct.
So basically, you wanna double the number of houses in something that overdoubles in size of houses that what it's designed for right now, unless they get a PUD, is that correct? Am I, am I seeing that right? You see, the way I'm looking at it, you got one per acre, and now we're down to two per acre, now we're down to five per acre in the R1. And basically, everything around it, to the west, to the east, to the north, is still all rural. That was my argument a month and a half ago, okay? What they're after is to put as many houses, and it says in this little paper right here, it says approximately 10 acres. Well, it's 8.37 acres, minusing out the roads and whatever other improvements they wanna make it look nice. And as I stated a month and a half ago, I know this is coming that direction, you know? I'm not naive on that. My point was then, and it is still now, is you just can't throw all of that into one spot. It doesn't make sense to me when you've got what's coming to the north on one acre, nice, really nice houses, properties, shop, values are high, and as we're moving farther out onto the prairie, we wanna get smaller and smaller and smaller. That doesn't make sense to me, particularly to the people like myself that have property that, the minute that sort of thing gets around them, our value of property drops. Now, as I mentioned a month and a half ago, I know it's coming. Do it right, build it properly, just like they did in the back. I don't have a problem with those houses there, because they're very nice. The infrastructure's nice, the yards, the ground, everything is nice. But you can't tell me, when you start putting five per acre, and I know, you mentioned, oh, there's one right up the street to the east up there, drive into that. But across the street on Prairie Avenue, they've got houses that tight, so that, that sort of worked right into that, you know? That's the way that comes, from the golf course, all that's moving up in that direct line. What's directly behind this subdivision, coming to the north, is all bigger property, right? And I'm just saying, the minute you start putting this deal in there, there's no reason to go to R1. RS1, right, allows plenty of houses on that property, and they'll be done properly, and it'll help the people that are around there that are sitting on five acres, or 10 acres, or whatever, you know? That's just my, I just think if it's done right, it can help everybody. It'll look good if it's done properly. The housing will be as nice as what's around it, and future growth, I think, is gonna come that direction there, but if it's done right, it'll help everybody. There's gonna be, as you mentioned, a new high school eventually someday out there, I think, on McGuire and off Prairie a little bit. I think that's, Post Falls School District has that, designated for that. But the thing is, you start putting that many houses, I mean, take the drive out there and look at the ones that everybody keeps talking about, oh, we're doing that up there. It's, they're cracker box, they're about 15 feet apart, you don't have room for a shop, you don't have room for anything extra on that. Where are people putting their boats, or putting their campers, or whatever? I'm just saying, it's gonna get cluttered fast. There'll be a lot of people in that. Traffic, they say, is gonna come back and around. That's why I wish I could see, I could see a map of this, but before, it was proposed that they'd have a cul-de-sac-type design, so it wouldn't go out on the prairie, but you know that's where it's gonna come out on. So my views haven't changed. I don't mind them building houses there. I just think the size of the lot needs to stay as big as possible to help the adjoining people that are around there, to keep up their, their property, make it look better.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
All right. Thank you very much.
Any rebuttal from the applicant?
Are you really asking if a lawyer has anything else to say? Yes. I'll try to keep it brief. I appreciate Mr. Stockwell's comments and his recognition that growth is coming, and coming in that direction. I think we can all recognize that. And to be sure, there is rural zoning in the county property that surrounds us, but this is within the city limits, that's why we're before you. And I think the final density concerns or issues certainly can be addressed when there's an actual subdivision application before you. You know, don't necessarily need to solve all those questions or answer those questions tonight. Whatever the proposed density of a subdivision development will probably be determined by market forces more than anything. Be determined by what is the status of Prairie Avenue at that point in time. If Prairie's five lanes, when this property is subdivided, I think they probably want to maximize the density, and that would be appropriate, being adjacent to a major arterial. But again, I think, as your staff mentioned, going to R1 for this particular eight-plus acres of property, recognizing there's county north, east, and west of this parcel, going to R1 for that property creates a transition, a buffer, if you will, of higher-density zoning along Prairie, and then buffering the lower-density parcels that are to the south of this property. So it almost makes sense, in that regard, that as Prairie develops and becomes a major arterial, that you would want higher-density R1 zoning, rather than having the one-acre or minimum along that five-acre, or five-lane arterial. And I think, again, in looking at development projects that have already been approved by the city to the east, on both sides of Prairie, you're seeing that same pattern of development, higher-density, even smart code 3 and 4, north of Prairie, and R1-density projects south of Prairie to the east. And that same pattern of development is coming west, and that's why we're here before you, because we think it makes sense. So we'd ask for your approval.
Very much. Okay. From the Commissioner's standpoint, any questions for staff?
So it's my understanding, John, that RWS and RW1 both meets the So, it's my understanding, John, that RWS and RW1 both meets the current comprehensive plan. Is that correct?
If you're referring to the R1 versus the R1S?
Correct.
That would be correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe Bill or Rob, any idea of when Prairie Avenue to the west is going to be improved to the five-lane arterial?
Mr. Chair, Robert Paul, Assistant City Engineer. The Post Falls Highway District controls the widening of Prairie Avenue at this time, and they are slowly working their way westward from Quarter Lane. Right now, they most recently completed the section between Hutter and Meyer Roads. And I know they are trying to pursue monies to get all the ways to Highway 41. As you go west of Highway 41, it will all be based upon the volume of traffic on that roadway and when dollars can be acquired through their general budgeter, budgeting process or through grants. There is no timeframe right now identified that we are aware of as to when a five-lane arterial will be west of Highway 41 or, in this case, close to three miles west of Highway 41.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for staff? All right. And I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll open it up to the commission for discussion. Fred?
Well, it seems that R1S meets the standards right now. You know, which is going to come first, the high traffic or the high density? Because one's going to draw the other. So, if you have high density, of course, you're probably going to have to have larger type of transportation in place. You know, I read the letter of not supporting going to R1. I listened to Mr. Stockwell's comments. So, we'll see what happens with the motion.
Okay. Ryan?
It's growing pains. I mean, there's R1 to the east. There will be R1 eventually in that area, but I do, I do get concerned about five units per acre. So, I'm, I'm a little mixed right now.
I under, well, as staff pointed out, both R1 and R1S are appropriate in the area. They meet the comprehensive plan. From a philosophical standpoint, I generally have a problem with R1S. And the reason I have a problem with it is because it will never get redeveloped at a higher density. It's one-acre or three-quarter acre lots will never get redeveloped. And a one-acre, so let's just say 40 acres with one, R1S zoning will chew up 40 acres with 40 houses. And that can happen in a relatively short order. And that can chew up our prairie very, very, very quickly. And it'll chew it up at a, at a rate that never gets redeveloped at any point in time. And I think that also R1S, from a infrastructure standpoint, it's really hard to have that much road and that few lots and maintain it in the long term. Post Falls is, Post Falls is a city, and as a city, it's an urban environment. I recognize that that is the urban interface between the city and the county. But it's not the limits of our, of our area-city impact. And eventually, the city will grow out on the prairie. And so, I do, because both are appropriate zones, I do think that in the long term, because it is in the city and because city of Post Falls is urban, that a single-family residential development similar to most of the rest of the city would be
Vicki?
I, I too have a little difficulty with the density, the five acre, five units per acre. I do agree that one per acre is, is pretty strong. I mean, it's not letting very much in there, but I, I also worry about five per acre makes it awful tight.
Okay. And I do have concern about the five per acre, too, but as I understand, that can be addressed at the time of the subdivision?
The, like, the max is five units per acre. So, they can propose a subdivision at five units per acre with minimum lots of 6,500 square feet. And in essence, as long as they meet the review criteria for a subdivision, it would be staff's recommendation to follow the guidelines for the review criteria and accept those, that proposal, whatever that may be. Okay?
So, what's your pleasure?
Well, I'll make a motion and see if it floats. [laughing] I would move to recommend approval of file ZC, come on, where is it? ZC 15-01, Meadow Vista Estates Zone Change, adopting the findings and conclusions, and recommending that we forward it on to City Council for R1.
Do I hear a second? Hearing none?
I'll second the motion. Let's go for vote.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. So, let's have a roll call. Kelly?
Carrie?
No.
Davis?
No.
Kimball?
Yes.
Ostemeyer?
No.
Borders?
So, we have a motion rejected for...
Motion denied.
Zone change to R1.
So, it goes forward to City Council?
I think there still should be a motion.
At this point, at this point, you would have the option to make a, another motion?
Do I hear another motion?
Oh, on me?
Yeah. Any other motion?
It's either Ryan or myself. Okay. Then, I'll go ahead and make a motion for Meadow Vista Estates Zone Change SC-15-01, that it be moved forward for consideration to City Council as R1S. Is that what we're looking for?
No, actually.
Oh, I'm, okay.
Actually, the motion would, would be to deny the request
Right.
For zone change to, from R1S to R1.
So, after it's died, you need to bring it back in. It's currently R1S. So, yeah. So, then, the motion would be to, to deny the request for R1 change and send it forward to City Council for review.
Second. Okay. Have a motion and a second. Kelly, let's have a roll call.
Carrie?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
No.
Ostemeyer?
Yes.
Borders?
Hi.
Yes.
Carrie.
We'll move on then to new business and that I can see. So, under staff comments, we have an impact fee update. John?
Yes. So, the Finance Director has prepared the development impact fee report that you have seen in, within your application, your staff report packet for their annual audit for fiscal year 2014. A development impact fee report is an annual requirement for every government entity that collects impact fees. In fiscal year 2014, approximately $431,242 were collected in impact fees, and $375,866.22 of impact fees were spent on roads, parks, and public safety projects to assist mitigating growth in the community. For the roads, the projects that were expended on were Celta's congestion, 7th Avenue Design, the Idaho Street Widening Project, Spencer Street between 2nd and 3rd Street, 15th, 16th realignment, and a signal and Celta's congestion mitigation. Approximately $318,442 were spent on those endeavors. Regarding parks, impact fee money was spent on the Park in the Meadows and the Post Falls Skate Park Speed Ring. Approximately $20,964 was expended for those. Public safety, the police department spent impact fees on wireless equipment, approximately $34,461 expended. So, that's the, the sum of the expenditures and what was generated for revenues for fiscal year 2014. Do you have any questions for me?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any commission comments? Anybody have anything that I could have?
None.
All right. Then, I would look for a motion.
Move to adjourn.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.